Hello. The meeting will come to order. It's my pleasure to welcome you. Council President Fox is traveling, and as President Pro Tem, I'll be running the meeting this evening. So let's get started. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 31st, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen, here. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present. Okay, and I'll ask Lieutenant Michello of the Fire Department in honor of Fire Prevention Week to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you're using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to open up the business of the meeting with a very important resolution. Councilmember Hairston, please introduce our first resolution from the Law and Labor Committee.
Thank you, Council Pro Tem. Is that where? President? I am introducing Resolution Number 9912 to appoint our new council member-at-large and to transfer 2022 committee and liaison assignments. This resolution is pending a closed-session discussion where what we are introducing, and that was announced at last council meeting, our council member Beth Little's resignation was tendered on September 19th, and a seat on a council is vacant pursuant to New Jersey Municipal Vacancy Law. The Summit Democratic City Committee submitted three nominees for the common council to consider to fill the vacancy. The three nominations were Jamie Levine, Lisa Campbell, and David Berkowitz. And we had a long discussion about the qualifications for each of the candidates who were being considered, and we chose to appoint Jamie Levine to fill the vacant seat that will serve for the balance of Beth Little's term until December 31st, 2023. And so I move that resolution.
My second.
Thank you. Comments from members of council. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. So Councilwoman Hairston is correct. We had a very robust discussion in the closed session. All three are extremely qualified to fill that seat. We did settle on Dr. Jamie Levine, and yeah, I think she's going to be a terrific fit-up here. She is a doctor, and with all we've gone through with the pandemic, her voice will be very valuable.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
I'd just say I'm excited to have our new colleague join us, and I met Jamie at the Arboretum at a fundraiser. I know that she's a zoning board member, so I don't know her that well, but I'm looking forward to getting to know her. So I just wanted to say that if she's watching.
I'm enthusiastic. I've known her. She's a strategic thinker, and she's calm and level, and that's really what we need.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll add my words of welcome and thanks to Dr. Jamie Levine for raising her hand and being willing to serve. She's already a wonderful community leader and an excellent person. I'm thrilled to serve alongside her. We are a lucky group, and the city will benefit from her service. So the committees will remain the same with Dr. Levine taking over the committee assignments managed by former council member Little until the end of this calendar year. So I'll review those now. There's the Administrative Policies and Community Relations Committee with council members Allen and O'Sullivan; Capital Projects and Community Services with council members O'Sullivan and now Levine; Community Programs and Parking Services with council member Miniger and myself; the Finance Committee with me and council member Hairston; the Law and Labor Committee with council members Hairston and Miniger; and the Safety and Health Committee with council member Levine and Allen. And when sworn in tomorrow, council member Levine will also take over as liaison to the Emergency Shared Dispatch Committee, the Board of School Estimate, the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and the Zoning Board. So we'll actually, we're checking on that one because she's currently on the zoning board and moving over to council. So we'll check on that one and confirm. Okay, yes, Mayor.
Can I just add that, so I don't sound like I'm, seem like I'm a slacker, I also serve on the Finance Committee and the Safety Committee every year.
I was focused on council members.
I know. I'm just doing this.
Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. And congratulations, Dr. Levine. Okay. Moving on to approval of the minutes, do I hear a motion on the regular enclosed-session minutes of the meeting that we had on September 20th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And the motion passes. Excellent. On to reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President Pro Tem. So a couple things. You may have seen that we did a TV thing on ABC Eyewitness News regarding police officer Karen Sowers, who is an esteemed member of our police department, and she is in need of a live kidney, a living kidney. She was diagnosed when she was 24 years old with polycystic kidney disease, and she needs a kidney. So we have been trying very hard through the city, through the police department, the Fire Department, EMTs, the PBA, and the F-MBA to raise awareness to, for people that might have make a match, to give her a kidney. It is, if you're interested, go to the city website. There's a QR code. You can just click on it and do a quick survey to see if there's any possibility that you're a match, and that's obviously if you're interested. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, as you know, we are building a wonderful fire department house, fire headquarters on Broad Street. The city is spending close to $16 million to build this building, but it's well-deserved, well-needed. It's over 100 years old, the old one. However, some of the things that didn't make the cut were things that really matter to the lifestyle, if you will, in the firehouse for our firefighters. So we're doing a private fundraising. We're trying to raise $400,000 for living room furniture, exercise equipment, trying to have a small room in the down-first floor where we have the history of the Summit Fire Department. We have close to $300,000. We have someone who is willing to match $100,000 if we get over our $300,000 level. And in order, so we've done, a lot of people in the community have, you know, donated money, businesses, and certain residents, but now we're doing a brick paver opportunity. So the pavers are the lowest, there are three levels. The lowest amount you can donate is $250, up to as much as you'd like. If you go to thecityofsummit.org/donate, you can find out more about this brick pavers opportunity. You know, I think of our firefighters, they run into buildings when, to help us when we're, you know, heading out the back door. So I just think it's an opportunity for us to say thank you and do certain things in the community. And then the third thing is, as we all know, Maple Street has been closed between Union Place and DeForest, but it will be reopened on November 2nd. The thought was maybe to open it on the 31st of October, but that day is a day that a lot of children will be trick-or-treating at the various merchants' places in town, and not a good day to change the traffic patterns when you're going to have a lot of kids walking around town. So it will be reopened on November 2nd. And then last thing is Sage is having a party at the Elks on October 27th at 6:00. It is not a fundraiser. It's trying to raise awareness for what Sage does. We are really great in focusing on our schools in this town, but we also need to focus on our seniors. So if you want to go, it's the Elks. It's free. Learn more about Sage, and you can obviously also make a donation, I would assume, but it is free. So October 27th at 6:00 p.m., and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We continue to wish City Administrator Michael Rogers a speedy recovery, and I will give a report. So first, I would like to acknowledge the passing of former council member Joyce Margie. Prior to her election, she was a member and chair of the city's Municipal Alliance to Prevent Alcoholism and Drug Abuse for several years, and eventually served as its chair. She then served two terms representing Ward II on the common council from 1997 to 2003. She was passionate about the arts in Summit, played a key role in the celebration of our centennial, and was kind and thoughtful in her approach. We are thankful for her service and honor her memory. Next, I will provide an update on Broad Street West. So at the last meeting, there were several comments about the previous plan for Subdistrict III, which has been rejected. I will take a moment to quickly outline some key milestones since June, and what is happening now, and what will happen next. So since June of this year, the previous proposal for Subdistrict III was rejected. Council directed the developers to begin planning for a new proposal that was first compliant with the redevelopment plan, second emphasized the importance of affordable housing and onsite parking, and three, had clear and transparent financials. At the council meeting on September 6th, the announcement was made that Subdistrict II is off the table. No development at all is being considered in the lot between the Y and the library, and the formation of the Broad Street West Advisory Committee was announced as well. So what's happening now is the, there is no proposed plan for any building in the Broad Street West redevelopment area. I'll repeat that one. There is no proposed plan for any building in the Broad Street West redevelopment area. Again, council has directed the redevelopers to come up with a proposal that complies with the redevelopment plan. Council will appoint members to the Broad Street West Advisory Committee by resolution later in this meeting. This committee is focused on financials for now, because the first step from here is to come up with a program, meaning the numbers around the project, the number of buildings, the height, the number of apartment units, the amount of retail space, the number of parking spaces, all of which are guided by the redevelopment plan. The city and the developer need to know whether building something within that framework is viable before design work can commence. So what will happen next, and by that I mean in the coming weeks and months, is council and our professionals will review for the community the specifics of our affordable housing obligation, the reasons why redevelopment was pursued, and the city's financial situation as we are heading into the 2023 budget year. Those things will be done at upcoming council meetings. Council will outline the process moving forward that will include opportunities for other city boards and commissions and the community at large to weigh in during community meetings, and it will also include an estimated timeline for all of those things. So it's my sincere wish that this approach will facilitate a community-wide understanding of where we have been, where we are, and where we are going. This will ensure we're all on the same page and will empower us to have factual, thoughtful, and meaningful conversations about this as a community with each other. So that's my update on Broad Street West, and my council president report is concluded. So now we have a couple of mayoral proclamations. Mayor.
Yes. I would like to please start with Fire Prevention Week, so Mr. Michello, please come up.
Thank you. Whereas the City of Summit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019 according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense the smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the rest of dying and reported home fires in half. Whereas Summit residents should be sure everyone in the household understands the sounds of the alarm and knows how to respond, and whereas Summit residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Summit residents should make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas Summit Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas Summit residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes where people are at the greatest risk of fire. Whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape" effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, I nor a latest mayor of Summit to hear about the claim October 9th through the 15th, 2022, as fire prevention meet throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Summit to have an escape plan for Fire Prevention Week 2022 and to support the fire safety activities and efforts of the Summit Fire Department. In witness whereof, I appear on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 6th day of October in the year 2022.
It's very important, obviously, that we have these plans, and I don't think of it too much anymore, but it's my husband and I are at home. We're old people. But then I think about my son and daughter-in-law who live in Chatham, and they have a four-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, and I bet you those kids don't know what the different sounds are. So I'm going home and calling my son.
I will. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I'd like to give a proclamation to the Friends of the Summit Public Library. Would Sheila Benel, a member and first president of the Friends of the Library, Ricky Owen, the current president of the library, and Melanie Wilson, the vice president, please Whereas Friends of the Summit Free Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events and programs throughout the year, and whereas the work of the Friends of the Libraries highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present, and whereas the Friends of the Libraries understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide life-threatening services to all ages, including access to new experiences through programming, museum passes, and our library of things. And whereas the Friends of the Libraries gift of their time and commitment to the library, sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I nor a latest mayor of the City of Summit to hereby proclaim October 16 through 2022 of 2022 as Friends of the Library week, and I ask our citizens to join the Friends of the Summit Free Public Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community better. In witness whereof, I appear on to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 6th day of October in the year 2022. Thank you. (Applause).
The Friends of the Summit Library is really a hidden gem in Summit, and this isn't going to be a sales spiel, but everybody should come out and support it because we do great things for the kids, we do great things for the community. The Library of Things is really cool. You can rent leaf blowers and tents, and even those things that help you find money hidden in the sand on the beach. And we have a big fundraiser coming up. People in Summit are so generous and have donated so much beautiful jewelry, and it'll come in, you don't have to spend time sorting it. It comes in in bags, and we have, you know, diamonds and gold mixed in with the stuff you could get out of a machine at Target. But there's beauties. I just found, I was cleaning and sorting jewelry this week, and I found this beautiful necklace, which I bought for myself. So join the library, come out, support us, become a member, and come visit. Thank you.
I will just add that 15 or so years ago, people were saying, oh, libraries are over. You know, we have, everything's online on the internet. We don't need libraries. And that's just not true. The library is more active and vibrant than it ever has been before. It's a place to meet, it's a place to be and to connect with other people, and as you said, lifelong learning. It starts with little kids until seniors. So I think we're so blessed to have a great library. So thank you, ladies, for your support.
(Applause).
Well, thank you. At this point in the meeting, we're going to go a little bit off of the agenda, and we're going to flip around the order just a little bit. We're going to be moving up the public hearing, coming from the Law and Labor Committee to now, ahead of the public comments, and I'll introduce Rob Clifton, who's the Senior Director of Government and Regulatory Affairs at Comcast Cable.
Thank you very much, Mr. Your Council President Pro Tem, Mayor, members of the governing body. Again, my name is Rob Clifton. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Comcast Cable, and we are here tonight for the statutory public hearing on an application that we provided to the municipality back in April to renew the cable franchise for Comcast here in the city. We are nearing the end of a three-year federally mandated process, which began back in February of 2020, when we sent to the town what is called a 626 letter, and this is from Section 626 of the FCC Guidelines to Cable Renewal. Basically, this letter was our notice of intention that we will seek a renewal of our cable television franchise here in the city. As I mentioned, in April, we provided our application for renewal, which lays out the technical specifications, financial, channel lineup, our bonds, our insurance documents for review by the governing body. The current certificate of approval will expire in January of 2023. The certificate of approval is a document that a cable company needs in order to operate a cable system in a municipality in New Jersey. The Board of Public Utilities will issue this document after municipal consent is given and our cable company's application has been reviewed for compliance with federal and state requirements. Most importantly, or one of the important aspects, is this only deals with cable television. It doesn't deal with internet service or phone service. They are not regulated by this document. And upon the close of the public hearing and after negotiations, we would be seeking from the municipality a consent ordinance, and the consent ordinance does not obligate the municipality to allow us to do anything other than continue to use the municipal rights-of-way to run our fiber and have our equipment. Most importantly, and since, as during the opening statement, it was said that this is aired on a Comcast channel and a Verizon channel, you know that this is not exclusive, which means any cable provider could come before the municipality and seek the same rights to service to the municipality as we are. There are four criteria on which the governing body must judge our application, and this is state and federal statute. Has the cable operator substantially complied with the terms of the existing franchise? Has the quality of the operator's service been reasonable in light of community needs? Does the operator have the financial, legal, and technical ability to provide those services? And is the renewal proposal reasonable to meet the future cable-related needs of the municipality? There are two areas when evaluating our application that you cannot use in whether to deny or to approve. Those are rates, which are governed by state and federal authority, and our channel lineup, which is protected under the First Amendment, like newspaper content is. However, rates and channel lineups are usually the only comments that anyone has, and I'll do my best to answer any of those questions tonight. So with that, I will, you know, field any questions that you may have on the process and move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. I will turn it over to Councilmember Hairston to open up the hearing.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, and thank you, Mr. Clifton, for such a thorough and extensive description of this ordinance that we're passing, and you called it a consent ordinance, which is something we don't do often. So this comes up every three years, and we had the opportunity to deliberate in Law and Labor when that application came in, in April, and so you have explained very well that this process by which all municipalities negotiate franchise agreements with their cable operators, it's our responsibility as municipality to act as the voice of the cable subscriber and the citizens of the community. So I thank you for clarifying that internet is not one of the things that you will be, that this application has to deal with, because that's where I spent time in the committee, wanting some help and making sure that we could do what we need to do here, but our attorney and our clerk rightly told us that that was not on the table. And so the city, as you said, currently has a franchise agreement with Comcast, which is set to expire in January of 2023, and we have had the opportunity to review the application that you submitted for this, to renew the franchise and for the purposes of state and federal law. And so that franchising authority in New Jersey really belongs to the Board of Public Utilities and Office of Cable Television, as was established in 1972 by Public Utilities and Office of Cable Television, as was established in 1972 by the New Jersey Cable Television Act. But so, truly, the ultimate decision is to renew or deny a cable franchise rests with the Board of Public Utilities, but we are acting on the citizens' behalf and reviewing it. So, however, we're responsible, and we're having this public hearing, and we will be issuing a consent ordinance once you have met all of those qualifications. And so, we'll look forward to hearing about that. And so, this mandatory public hearing is for council to take that comment from members of the public about this renewal application. And with that, Council President, I know the hearing is open and...
Make a motion to open.
Make a motion to open the hearing.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. So, the hearing is open. We'll start with members, comments from members of council. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President Protam. Thank you for coming tonight. I just want to connect the dots to make sure I'm clear on this, too. So, we have a local access station, HTV, and my understanding is this is the franchising, we're approving that franchise for Comcast, for the HTV. Is that correct?
Right now, it's just the hearing on the application.
Correct.
Okay.
So, the channel that we provide is provided through this process. So, negotiations 15 years ago, they established, one of the things we provide to municipalities is an access channel, and that is one of the issues.
Okay. Okay. All right. I just wanted to put a plug in for HTV.
Any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? This is our shot. Okay. All right. Hearing none. I will close the hearing on this public hearing. And, okay, thank you.
President Protam, if I may just add, the next step in the process, Mr. Clifton, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to have an ordinance drafted and sent to the Office of Cable TV for review. Once it comes back from that review, then if there are no changes, the council will introduce the ordinance, which is the agreement.
Correct.
And then we'll proceed as if it were an ordinance.
So, what I will do in the next few days is go through the existing franchise and ordinance, and I will send, I guess through council, a draft ordinance that we have used in other municipalities, that the board has reviewed many, many times. And if the terms are, if the council's in agreement on the terms, then at that point, but I will CC, when I send it to the attorney, I will CC Nancy Wolf from the Board of Public Utilities, just to let her know we're in that discussion phase.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clifton.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. So, whenever you come up, please, to read from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to the city clerk, either hand it to her or cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. And we'll ask to stick to around three minutes. So, we'll open up public comments at this point. Hi.
So, I've been waiting patiently for this little postcard to arrive.
You got one.
No.
I still haven't gotten mine.
I did not. I had to ask a friend. Everybody watching, this is the mailer that the City of Summit was to mail out, and I have not gotten mine. So, I went to my friend, and I said, can I please borrow yours for tonight for my demonstration? This was the residence for Summit mailer that was sent out to not everybody in Summit, because we didn't have funds for everybody of the 22,000 residents. But this mailer shows where Broad Street West is going to be. Everybody behind me can see. This mailer does not. I was a little disappointed to see this. It's very colorful, I do have to say, the graphics are beautiful. But it really just does not show too much and tell too much about Broad Street West. So, my point here, and I'd really like to have a discussion, that we need our next committee that we're going to have, our finance committee, and President Protam, Mr. Barton, I liked how you explained the finance committee and how we're going to open up to another committee. I think our other committee should really dive into what this is and explaining to the public of what Broad Street West is, because I think we can explain a little bit about where it is, because on here, it doesn't really say where it is. You have to go into more detail of where it is, and, you know, my 70, 80-year-old parents don't really understand what this means. So, that committee can really explain in layman's terms what this project is about. So, we can do better for the public like this. Yes, this is kind of, you know, has not in nice, so nice words, but it shows you where Broad Street West is. So, that's number one. Number two, I was wondering if you could give us an update on the Maple Street closure and your ideas for future closure for next year, please, if you have any ideas on that. The public's kind of blowing up all over social media, and people are trying to figure out what's happening next year, and if you guys have any ideas or words of wisdom, what might happen on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, I'll start with the mailer. So, I think the purpose of it was to really direct people to the website, to sign up for alerts on there, and there's just a ton of information about everything that's ever happened on Broad Street thus far. I think the reason why there wasn't a map and the reason why there wasn't a drawing is because there isn't one. You know, we are not currently considering any proposal yet for any part of the redevelopment area. So, it was really just supposed to be a kind of eye-catching thing to hopefully alert people to the fact that these conversations are continuing, and you can sign up for information on the website that way. To Maple Street closure, Mayor Raitis mentioned in her report that it is going to be reopened to vehicle traffic on the 2nd of November, this November, which is earlier than we were anticipating in our ordinance, or the resolution that we passed. And that decision was made in consultation with the Department of Community Services, Summit Downtown, Inc., the Capital Projects and Community Services Committee, and it was largely due around avoiding a change in the traffic pattern around Halloween.
Oh, no, I'm really happy about that, but I was referring to what's happening next year.
Oh, yeah. So, Summit Downtown, Inc. has engaged a consultant that has sent out surveys, and they've also done focus groups, and they've done a number of things, and they're basically going to be presenting SDI and council with options for, you know, what they learned from those surveys and focus groups and what options for next year and beyond could look like. And I was checking with Nancy Adams of Summit Downtown, Inc., and I don't know when we should expect that report, but I would think pretty soon, I would think within the next couple of months. And then, you know, to the point about, you know, people hearing, you know, when it's open and when it's closed on Facebook and stuff, I think it's just always a good idea to sign up for alerts on the city website. And, you know, if there's a question that's not there on the city website, just email, call any of us, and we can get the accurate information. So, did I answer everything?
I think so. I think people really want to get ahead of what's happening with SDI and understand what's happening next year, because there's a lot of people who are against it and for it, and I think that coming to the table with everybody is a good idea, instead of what happened with the spring.
Because they commissioned this consultant, and they're paying for it, the whole point was that they went to merchants in the area, not just in the, on Maple Street, residents, surveys, whatever, and then they're doing focus groups, they're going to give us that information. I have no idea where it's landing. I really don't.
So, I think when we get that idea of when that's happening, then everybody in that Maple Street area will have, can...
Well, we'd love to have it tomorrow.
I know.
But we don't have it tomorrow. And as Councilmember Barton just said, he's just in touch with Nancy Adams, and she's not sure. They're working on it.
Well, we appreciate that being opened earlier, so thank you.
Yeah, we'd love to have it, you know, have any answers quickly. But honestly, I've now been working with SDI for seven years, almost, and these retail merchants, they work really hard, and their focus is on their business and their sales and their revenue and everything. So, doing a survey and taking the time to talk to somebody about whether Maple Street should be closed or open, that's not at the top of their list. So, it takes time to get these folks to pay attention and totally understandably why it takes some time. So, we're not pressuring them. I don't, I'd rather have good data, good information from as many people as we can than quick data.
And I think the problem is, and I appreciate the engagement, is that the gas leaf blowers, when we had that, there was no feedback after that. We were supposed to hear some feedback after that was rolled out. We didn't get any data analysis after that, the ban, that, so we didn't, we're just kind of curious what is happening here, if there's any data that's been rolled out now. So, we'll wait to hear from SDI and see where it goes, and I'll talk to people and see.
We'll make sure that it's a very well-publicized presentation at council and a lot of people.
Okay, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Other public comments? No?
Council President Protam. Good evening, President Protam, Mr. Barton, Madam Mayor. I guess the question I have is on data. When we typically do surveys for the community, what type of modeling or analysis is used for that, and how do we know that, for instance, one survey is similar to another survey? How are we analyzing that and how are we modeling that data?
Well, I, well, we don't do a ton of surveys. This one that we were just talking about just now was commissioned by SDI and a consultant that they've engaged. The, you know, I will have to get back to you on the other surveys that we've conducted before and the methodology that we've used to do that. They're not incredibly common.
The last one I can recall was around the master plan revision.
Okay.
2017.
Thank you. The next question I have is, what is our current affordable housing number? I reached out to the, reached out to some different folks, but I haven't had an actual number, and I think some of the residents that I speak to just want to know what the actual number is, because there's, I mean, I have the, I've read this at length, and I just wanted to understand what the number is right now, so that we're all on the same page.
So, you mean the number that have been constructed or the number that have, that is our requirement?
Both.
Okay. So, the requirement is 50 by the year 2025, and we're at 17 units.
Sorry, can you just slow down for one second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm not a fast learner.
So, this is, if you're looking at that report, it's page 83 or 84 in there, and I think it goes to page 86. And that basically outlines our whole obligation in the first three years of that agreement, the next three years of that agreement, and then the final four years of that agreement.
Can we just go through that line by line?
Sure. So, again, our affordable housing obligation as a city is 50 new units by 2025.
Yep.
And we are at 17 of those units.
So, we have 17 of those units.
Well, so, the 12 that have just been, the ground has been broken on Morris Habitat for Humanities Project on Morris Avenue, those will be 12 units once constructed that count towards our, towards our total.
So, your 17 includes that 12 or no?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we're at 17.
Correct. And actually, I think it's either the next meeting or the meeting after where we're going to have from, an update from our affordable housing manager and our affordable housing attorney as well, that will go over this in a bit more detail.
Understood. And it seems as though, I was looking for the February minutes, that I believe we're supposed to update what are actual numbers, and I just couldn't find them. Is there somewhere I can find that from the February meeting for housing?
So, the February Affordable Housing Report?
Right. I just didn't see it. I might be missing one.
That's on the Affordable Housing section of the city's website.
But I can't find the actual number. Can somebody follow up with me? Okay.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll email that to you.
Okay, got it. So, you're saying that they are going to come speak to the public?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other public comments?
My name is Fred Clemens. I live on Orchard Street. And my primary concern has been about pedestrian traffic and the way it's being handled as far as street crossing, bicycles, and even motor vehicles. The main concern with me is motor vehicles now, because very few come to a full stop in front of a stop sign. And if they do stop, it's generally on top of the pedestrian crossing. And that's been a problem, because I was almost run over because of that. I was crossing, it was in a Union Place on Summit Avenue. I see the car coming down Union Place, I knew it has to stop, so I started crossing. But instead of the car stopping, it ends up right in front of me, and that's, that doesn't work. One other time, I've been keeping track of that crossing off and on for, over the past year now, and I've seen people cross that don't care. There's a crossing light there, and nobody pays attention to it. Not everybody pays attention to it. One time, early this summer, two kids were crossing, maybe 12, 13 years old, it seemed like, they were crossing. One says to the other, they didn't press the crossing button, they weren't even in the crossing way. So, one says to the other while they're crossing, if I get hit by a car, I get hit by a car. No more barred final. And barred final, I found out, was a game. So, for that to be so unconcerned with, especially with the recent accident where an elderly gentleman was hit by a car and allegedly thrown 40 feet, it doesn't make any sense that there's no priority to this concern. I've been standing at that crossing, usually the worst time I found was between 12 and 1:00 PM. And this past week, I think it was yesterday or the day before, I counted no less than three dozen pedestrians who didn't bother to press the crossing, and cars that just rolled through, about a dozen, two dozen cars that just rolled through the stop sign. They roll slower, but they don't stop before, and if they do stop, it's generally because they see traffic coming down the roadway. And to me, that's, with a priority by the police department, for it to be a priority, pedestrian safety is a priority, it's not making any sense to me, because nothing's happening. You have the crossing, the crossing light's there, and nothing's being done. They ignore them, and then with the Maple Street Springfield Avenue, I brought that up online, and I'm sure you're aware of it by now, but with the pedestrians and bicyclists across any time, sorry, the bicyclist take charge of the sidewalk. I'll be walking up the hill, and I'll see a bicyclist coming down, they'll expect me to get out of their way. Or someone, a couple of bicyclists behind me, they'll expect, they'll be ringing their bell or whatever, asking me to get out of their way. When you're on the sidewalk on a bicycle, when I was growing up, I had to get off and walk around the pedestrians. The pedestrians have priority on the sidewalk. Cars and motor vehicles have priority on the roadway, except when there's a bicycle lane on the roadway. And when they're riding on the roadway, they're supposed to be following the same laws. But I've seen bicyclists ignore all the traffic laws, red lights and everything else. They just go on and do what they're going to do. They make up their own rules, like they don't care, and there's nothing being done. I think this goes on everywhere, not just in Summit, because I've heard from, you know, family and friends, that this constantly goes on everywhere.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So, first of all, safety and health is the number-one priority of this government. So, I will toss it to Councilmember Allen and Chief Zagorsky to speak to the ongoing pedestrian and traffic safety measures that are being taken, and I'll let you...
Because I spoke to Chief Zagorsky last night, unknowing that he was chief. He was getting outside, going out to the coffee meeting, coffee shop.
Okay.
I was watching what was going on over there. It got started late because of rain, but eventually, people started showing up, the tables were cleaned off and set up outside, about a half an hour late because of the rain. And then, these cars pull up, they get out, they go up to the thing. I was just standing across the street. I was just standing across the street waiting for something to happen. And eventually people were gathering. And meanwhile, Chief Zagorsky pulls up where, nearby where I was standing. And we, we talked together for probably close to half an hour. Was that about half an hour?
Okay.
But it's the same, I explained the same things to him as I pretty much said here.
Okay, well, excellent. If you, if you would like to update on where we are with pedestrian and traffic safety, that would, I think, be helpful.
Well, and I, I will let Chief Zagorsky give a fuller update. But what I want to say to you, I want to just make sure it was Mr. Clemens? Is that your, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I share your concern and the Safety Committee has been discussing this. The mayor and the chief and I, I've been raising it. I've been noticing the same behaviors. I am passionate about pedestrian safety. I have two kids in this town. I've been seeing people do the same thing, rolling through stop signs. There's, whether they're speeding or not, it feels like they're speeding. I feel like our traffic patterns have changed exponentially since COVID and I am equally concerned. And so the chief and I and the mayor for now have been discussing what those, what we could do. There's three different things that you can do with safety, enforcement, engineering, and education. I personally would like to see a couple angles. One, education. I think potentially partnering with schools, getting in maybe, I don't know if they do, when they have the kids come together, what are they called? Thank you. Maybe an assembly at a school, at all the schools and start talking about, it is an onus on children to make sure that they're looking when they get to crosswalks, perhaps. I have a young driver, he's 18 years old. Every single time he walks out of that house, or my house, I say to him, I'm like, please, drive safely. Slow down when you get to a crosswalk. Please take your foot off the gas downtown. I would love to see a, well, I don't want to say this, but I'd love to see a slower speed limit on, on Springfield Avenue. And, and I think that from an engineering perspective, Director Schrager has been working really hard with the community. There's a lot of people who have come to us to do traffic studies. And so sometimes the speed, you know, works in their favor and they are able to get a stop sign, sometimes it doesn't. But I think there are multiple things. There's an onus on ourselves to make sure we're taking care of our community and how do we educate our community? And then there's an onus on policing and ensuring that we are truly enforcing. And I don't want to take up the whole time because I know that in our last committee it was discussed that we need to start writing tickets. I think we don't like to ticket.
I don't think tickets are important. It's the idea of telling people, don't do that. If a, if an ununiformed police officer would stand at that intersection for a half an hour even, and they see a pedestrian starting to cross the street without pressing the cross signal, say, just please press the crossing signal. When you, they see a bicyclist, it's not the point of giving out tickets because by then it's too late. You get, you want people to listen. And that's, to me, that's the important part. When they did the bike rally for the second graders, I think it was, at the Tulip Street, Tulip Street, I think it was, they should have shown them at the time, dealing with intersections and crosswalks and all of that, instead of going through an obstacle course. An obstacle course is done when you're training, learning to ride a bike. They already know how to ride a bike, as far as I can see. And just showing, wearing a helmet correctly as part of safety, that's only part of it. Yes, wearing, wearing a helmet is always important, but to have, not, but to not know the rules of the road, you know, when I was growing up, we had to have our bikes licensed. And that, that should be an important part of being in Summit. If you have to have your dog and cat licensed, what's wrong with licensing your bicycle as well? And knowing the ru, and making sure you know the rules of the road, instead of just going on, hey, okay, I'll just ride on the, ride wherever I want, whenever I want and ignore the traffic signals? I've seen bikes ignore it every time I'm on the sidewalk.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clemens. So what we'll do is, we'll get your email to the city clerk and we can, and we can follow up with you because it sounds like you have a lot of really good ideas. So thank you very much for your comment.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you want to give a quick update?
Just give you a quick update on some of the initiatives we've been doing since the school year started.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Allen, she already pointed out two of these with the engineering and the education angle that we've been doing. And then within the last two weeks, we have stepped up the enforcement with motor vehicle targeting problem areas. Right now staffing levels are down because we are going through some transition with retirement and new officers. But we, to step up enforcement, we, we're using overtime and putting out special details. And that's been going on for two weeks now. And then talking to Mr. Clemens, again, I share the same concerns as he does. I relayed it to him when, when we met. And some of the information that he gave me, we are using the sort of locations that he was providing us where he noticed some problems. So the enforcement end is, again, being stepped up for the past two weeks and it'll continue.
Thank you.
Council President, may I just say, thank you very much, Chief and Councilwoman Allen. And Mr. Clemens, thank you for raising your concerns. I agree with you. But I'm going to go a little bit on the other, maybe, I don't know which direction, but I am, I've lived in town for 34 years. I'm su, I would, I would say I'm sure, but I shouldn't say that. But, and, and I have seen a change in people's driving habits. I really am opposed to what is derogatively returned to, termed the nanny state. I am seeing a complete decrease in personal responsibility among citizens in our town. We have 47 police officers on the payroll. We were down a few right now. We have 22,000 people in town. We, none of us won't have a police officer on every corner. But we ought to be teaching our children, we ought to be responsible for what we're doing, and we ought not to be looking constantly to the city to make sure everything's perfect. So I, 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 this is maybe not a very popular point of view, but I'm seeing a decline of personal responsibility throughout the community on lots of different levels, and it's disheartening. But I do know that the Safety Committee is very, very committed to education, engineering, and enforcement. And we've talked about it. It's, it's our number one topic all the time. And, and again, I'm very glad, send your email, give your email to the clerk and let's continue this because you do have some very good ideas.
Because when, when I was watching the video of the police officer explaining four-way stop, there was only one car that came to a full stop behind the stop sign. Everyone was rolling through.
I know.
To me, for an official video like that, giving an example, that shows almost like it's okay to do that.
Well, we'll take a look, and we'll take another look at that video, but thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? We have a couple that were emailed in, correct?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, thank you.
Two emails were received. The first one is from Bill Callahan on Drumhill Drive. He's asking, the 12 units at the Italian American Club property will become part of the city's affordable housing portfolio. How many affordable units do we have today and what is the president, the present COA obligation today? Are we then compliant with COA regulations?
So that's the same answer that was given before. We're, including the 12 there, we're at 17 out of our 50. And we'll get an update on that in either next meeting or the meeting after.
Okay, and the last one is from Doty Perron of Hill Crested. In view of the increasing lack of parking and also the block of traffic flow from Summit North and Summit South, when does the council intend to reopen Maple Street and the parking spaces at Batavia and other restaurants? The danger of COVID is dwindling and restaurants no longer need the boost for their business. The streets along, belong to the city of Summit. What if any rental are they currently paying for that space? I worked on the route for the Overlook Hospital, Overlook Hustle with the Chief of Police, and they were very particular in blocking streets. I am surprised that they have not encouraged reopening COVID parking spaces.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So as we mentioned before, November 2nd, reopening to vehicle traffic parklets and Maple Street, I think, are probably going to have to be discussions that are happening separately, but on sort of a parallel track. You know, we have the Maple Street discussion and the report that's coming from SDI. And then parklets are going to be a decision that we're going to have to make as a community as well. And then to answer that, the question about the charge, there has been no charge for the last three years for the parklets, except in the instances where the restaurant has a liquor license, in which case they do pay for an extension of premises fee. However, moving forward, I think there's largely consensus up here that we would look to be charging for parklets. And that would be, also be a change to an ordinance that we would have to consider as a council. So, yes, Mayor?
I, I just want to point out that the parklet that was built in front of Batavia and Tito's on Springfield Avenue was done well before COVID. So that had nothing to do with COVID.
Yes.
And the, please help me correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, that those two restaurants paid how much to build them? Five, $10,000?
Five.
$5,000 they contributed to building that, kind of that, that wooden kind of, you know, platform. So, and I'm not saying they're, they're not part of the equation, they are. And there'll be a whole discussion, and, in caps, about parklets. But those, that parklet was well before COVID and it was not done because of COVID. That's all, just pointing that out.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No more emailed comments, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment section of the meeting and we will move on to ordinances for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for hearing number 22-3265?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-15 Department of Police, Subsection 2-15.1 Establishment.
And Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President Protem. At our council meeting on September 20th, we introduced ordinance 9895 to codify the Police Department's Table of Organization to include it as part of the city code. This action does not increase or decrease the number of police officers within the city. This ordinance simply creates a line of authority relating to the police functions and codifies the Table of Organization as part of the city code. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
And I will second you on that. And the hearing is now open. Are there member, comments from members of council on this? Okay, comments from members of the public? Okay, so we're going to close the hearing on that ordinance. And now we're moving on to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 22-3265, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-15 Department of Police, Subsection 2-15.1 Establishment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. As we just held a hearing on this ordinance, I move to adopt ordinance number 9895.
Thank you, and I will second that. We will do a voice vote, a roll call vote on this one. Thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
President Bortan?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on to resolutions. I have a couple from Finance, so strap in. It's my pleasure to introduce Resolution 9909, which appoints the members of the Broad Street West Advisory Committee. So I'll review a few of the things I mentioned in my introduction of the resolution to create this new advisory committee. So the purpose of the group, in a nutshell, to provide advice to council about the financials of any potential deal as related to Broad Street West. More specifically, and reading directly from the resolution, to investigate the assumptions, forming the basis for a proposed purchase price of the city-owned land to be developed, including the estimate revenue anticipated to be generated by the project. To review and report on any financial information pertaining to the proposed project that may be submitted to the committee. To consider the potential for a payment in lieu of taxes structure. To generally identify questions and any concerns regarding the financial impact of the proposed redevelopment project on the community and/or any pilot to be further evaluated by the city's financial professionals. And to bring attention to the common council any matters as may be deemed appropriate. The qualifications for the people that we were hoping would apply were essentially financial professionals with experience that is relevant to redevelopment. Reading again from the resolution, extensive work experience in real estate development and construction loan finance, or a specialized expertise in alternative asset class management with a demonstrated understanding of residential, commercial, and retail use pro forma analysis, project loan underwriting, real estate market risk assessment, and capital deployment. So council received 19 applications from members of the community. We are extremely lucky to have so many who are willing to give of their time and talent, and we truly appreciate every member of the community who applied. We have five community member spaces to fill. And we chose those who would, we would like to serve based on their qualifications as related to the resolution and with a desire to balance various relevant backgrounds and experiences. So as a first step, we considered very helpful input from our new financial advisor, Jennifer Edwards, and our CFO, Tammy Baldwin. Then in various conversations between all the members of council, we discussed and finalized the slate of five people that I will share with you now. So first, Susan Bowen, who has experience in a, hi, thank you for being here, who has experience in a fiduciary role as a bank trust officer. She has experience modeling cash flows and in municipal finance in her current employment where she has held, where she has had experience modeling pilot payments. Susan is also a chartered financial analyst. Yan Cho, who has over 25 years' experience in institutional commercial real estate investing, including multifamily developments and acquisitions. He has reviewed and completed numerous suburban apartment, retail, office development transactions. Matt Kaplan, who is managing partner of a real estate investment firm that includes multifamily assets. He has a very strong real estate investment background, along with experience and knowledge with master plans and redevelopment. Kevin McGoy, who has experience in underwriting commercial and real estate loans. His background includes the utilization of capital assets by evaluation of financial strategies across various asset classes, including risk arbitrage, capital structure arbitrage, high-yield investing, fundamental, and private investing. I don't think I've said the word arbitrage that many times ever. David Mullen, who has vast experience in credit risk analytics and management, with several years of experience as the director of the Real Estate Finance Ratings Group at a renowned rating agency. David brings another perspective to the committee, which also includes experience in real estate law. So this is merely a summary of the vast qualifications and diverse experiences of this group. Council is always looking to leverage the wealth of talent that exists in this community. We're committed to continued engagement with our other advisory boards, committees, and commissions on this Broad Street West topic. This new group will serve as one of many that are providing advice to council, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Thank you. So I'll stop talking. Comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President Protem. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, who is just the utmost professional. She has been through, I think, more than six redevelopments and the experience you bring to this deliberation. I have such confidence that you will be a great resource to the committee. And I just thank you and Jennifer for the, you know, outstanding deliberation that you did over all 19. And I, I have great hope, I have great hope that the committee will do what is needed.
Thank you. Other members of council? Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President Protem. Yeah, just to thank these people for raising their hand. It's, you know, as the mayor always says, it's volunteers that make this city run. We have great department heads, but we really couldn't do what we do without volunteers in this community. So I just applaud these people for giving us their time and talent.
Okay, any other members of council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. I just, I'll be duplicative. I really want to thank Tammy and Jennifer. You guys were amazing going through all the resumes. And thank you and welcome to all the new advisory board members. I am looking forward to hearing, you know, more from you guys. I am looking forward to hearing, you know, more from you guys. So thank you for stepping up. This is a really important step in the process, so thank you.
Okay. Comments from members of the public?
Hi, Dory, at Gagnon again. So I was, you know, anxiously waiting for this, but, you know, and I don't know this man at all, so I apologize, but I was hoping that nobody from the Board of Ed or the zoning or planning board was going to be nominated and Mr. Cho is on the Board of Ed. So I'm a little upset about that and I have to say that I was, out of the 19 people, somebody else couldn't have been outside of that scope. So, you know, that is a little disheartening, just saying, because he's publicized stuff against residents for Summit and Broad Street West, really advocating that he wants this project to go through no matter what. So I'm going to state it right now, I'm against his name. I don't know him personally, I just know how his view is for Broad Street West and I feel like that's going to skew it. So I really feel like you guys should have picked somebody else who did not have such a strong opinion about Broad Street West. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I say?
Sure. Councilmember Allen?
So I didn't really plan on speaking about this. I share your concern and I, we had dialogued about it. And I'm sure if Yan is watching, I just want to say that they're an incredible family and that our kids run track together and so making these choices in our community is very difficult sometimes because we all know each other. So I shared your concern. I don't know if you want to talk more about it for certain, but in terms of him coming out again, you know, to be for the project, there were other people that were against the project that are also on there and, you know, I think I'm taking a very cautious approach and step to this. I think that the people that are on there have the right expertise and, you know, I've said very, from the upfront, I mean, I'm taking this a very cautious approach saying this, but, you know, I've, from the very get-go, the redevelopment concerns me because development concerns me, right? So this is a big step for me also, to go into this arena and, you know, get a group going and look at the numbers. I have to have faith in that. We can absolutely have a dialogue about who's on there and what their background is. You know, I, certainly you guys can talk about that, but I hear your concern, I shared it, but at the end of the day, I think that Yan Cho has the experience and I, I mean, I can't talk about much more than that. So I just wanted to, I didn't want to not acknowledge your concern because he is on the Board of Ed, so.
May I just say that I trust the integrity of all five people, whether their opinion is pro or con, and I don't know what all their opinions are. I haven't spoken with but for those who've come to council to talk about what they want to say. But I, maybe I'm naive, these are very, very qualified people and I trust their integrity.
Just quickly to ask a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure. Add your name and address, sir.
Andres Cusada, Glendale Road. So what's the, what's the expectation from the council on the discussions to proceed forward with the advisory count, the advisory committee? Is there an output you expect from them after certain deliberations with council?
Yeah, so, so that, thank you, that's a good question. So partially outlined in the resolution, the, essentially, to boil it down to one sentence, it's to help us get to the best deal possible. And if there is no deal to be had, then we'll determine that as well. That, I think, is at like the most basic level, what I think we're looking for from this group. We are not yet at a point where we're even ready to have anything, we don't have a proposal or any documents or any pro formas to even convene the group yet. We're putting the people in place to be ready for when we're there, but we're not yet. So I think once we have something for them to review, we'll have a much better idea of how we can move forward.
So will, will any of their recommendations be made public to the rest of Summit?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
So when you get them, that'll be posted and we'll hear about it via the website, correct?
Yeah, so, so.
As to how, we don't know.
In exactly what format?
In a manner that's public.
In exactly what format, I don't know. Because the documents, the information that they're going to be reviewing is confidential and proprietary, so throughout.
Is that because it's developer communications?
Well, it's actually twofold.
Sure.
So I think what Council Protem just said is, this group of experts are going to be giving guidance to the professionals that are retained by the city. You have a redevelopment attorney, you have your CFO, you have a financial expert to help the city, if a deal is to be struck, get the best financial deal possible. So parts of it, you know, we don't want to reveal their strategies on how to, you know, they might say, this is how you play this to get a better deal, that you wouldn't reveal that until you struck the deal or presented to the developer. But the goal is, is that whatever they can, anything that they can come up and won't jeopardize the ongoing negotiations with the redeveloper, that would be revealed.
Okay. And just to further clarify, if there is a redevelopment agreement that we can get to, all of the details, all the deal terms will be made publicly available for public comment here and then most likely at the planning board and there will be multiple opportunities for that. So everything eventually will be completely publicly available.
Right, I'm just hearing two things, if there's one, and they are here to negotiate the deal forward. So is the output to talk about the best deal you can get or is the output you're going to get from the, from this particular group of people either way it goes? In which case, if they say, if they tend to lean, you're not getting the best for Summit, you should just trash this deal altogether and try and resurface negotiations with another developer? Is that part of this as well or is it just to get the deal with the current developer?
No, I think, I think what I said is exactly what Council Protem President said, is if they look at it and say, this doesn't make financial sense, you don't do it. These are the experts that are going to be giving them guidance.
That matches much better.
Yeah, so ultimately, it's up to council to decide what, right? So we're going to be taking the advice of this group of people as well as all the other boards and commissions that we have, the members of the community at large, and then ultimately we have to make a decision.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you talked about Maple Street, this a little bit further and I know we can't, we stopped this conversation, but if you wouldn't mind me going back a little bit about Maple Street. You talked about, is SDI is the group, the consulting group?
So Summit Downtown Inc. is the, is the organ, is the group that manages our special improvement district, which is the downtown. So what happens there is.
Who's the consultancy then?
So the, I have to check on the name of the.
It's just a different group?
Yeah, they hired a consultant.
Yes, they hired a third party.
You mentioned, this might be just words again, so permit me, you said they'll come back to us with options. What options would you expect them, not in detail, like I expect them to say specifically this, but are you making room for something that's going to cost the city anything?
I, I don't know. I have no idea what the contents of the report will be. I think what they'll say is, if you, if you wanted to close Maple Street moving forward, this is how you could do it. They may say, based on the survey results that we got, we don't think Maple Street should be closed because residents and merchants are not in favor of it. You know, I, I don't have any idea what the, what the survey results say.
Okay.
So I don't know what the format of the report is going to be either.
Sure, but again, this is just a proposal, it's not something the council.
Right, no, we would, ultimately, we have to vote on, we would have to pass ordinances or resolutions to make any kind of changes and those are things that would also have a public hearing.
All right, perfect.
Just so the public knows, closing a street is a very difficult undertaking.
Yep.
Requires DOT approval and Governor Murphy extended the ability to have street closures because of the ongoing kind of dissipation of COVID, but it was extended for this year. So that's why towns have had it, but, you know, I was in New York City last weekend and a lot of the, their closures and stuff are going away.
Right.
So, but a lot of, a lot of what, when it was closed last year and this year, it was due to an executive order. It wasn't, if you, if they, if the governing body said, we want to close Springfield Avenue, it'd be really great to have a walking Springfield Avenue like they have in Times Square, it's a massive undertaking and it requires DOT state approval. It's not something that's done easily whatsoever.
Okay, all right. And one more, if you don't mind.
If we could stick to the Broad Street thing and maybe we can connect via email.
I don't know if this is, like, if this is not part of this, has to do with the firehouse.
Let's, if you could just send me an email, because we're, we have to keep our comments focused on the Broad Street.
Got it, I'll do that. Thank you so much.
This, this resolution here. Thank you.
But please send me.
But please send me, please do, send me the, thank you. Any other comments on this resolution?
Henry Vassman, 18 Hartley Road. I've been hearing about this advisory committee for quite some time and I have some concerns. I'm suggesting that all participants in the committee be required to sign an oath or non-disclosure agreement stating they will not divulge any information about the committee's work that could hamper the City of Summit's negotiating position. If such a legally enforceable statement cannot be executed either by law or refusal of any individual to sign such an agreement, that person must not be allowed to participate in the committee. Some have suggested that written reports of the committee proceedings be made public and that the reports can be redacted to provide confidentiality, but that doesn't assure confidentiality by committee members who could still divulge sensitive negotiating information unless they are personally bound to confidentiality. Here's why I'm concerned. Some advisory committee members may be affiliated with or sympathetic to the group called Residents for Summit and therefore they may have divided loyalties. This is a group that has not been transparent and has been less than truthful regarding Broad Street West. People who said they represent Residents for Summit claim either 1,600, 1,700, or 1,800 people signed their petition, but the only publicly disclosed names are the 831 people who signed the letter sent to the city clerk last April. Are there another 800 signers? If there are additional signers, who are they? We don't know because the identity of the people they say support their organization has not been disclosed. That's not being transparent. If you read the April correspondence from Residents for Summit for the city clerk, it makes one acknowledgement and one appeal. First, the document acknowledges, quote, "Resident taxpayers agree that the BSW area is in need of redevelopment," unquote. And they ask the council to, quote, "listen to the residents' overwhelming objections to the scale, density, and parking problems of the proposal that is before them," unquote. There's another communication by the Residents for Summit that is posted on the internet and hosted by Squarespace.com. It says, quote, "We demand to see the alternative development and design proposals for the city's downtown redevelopment project," unquote. No signers of this document are listed, so it's impossible to verify how many people support this request. That's not being transparent. The council has listened and responded to both documents. The first proposal for Broad Street West has been rejected and we will see another one. So the original communication and the online petition are irrelevant, yet postings on Facebook, elsewhere on the internet, and mailings continue to feature the first proposal, giving recipients the impression that the rejected proposal is still under consideration. That's not, that's less than truthful. Residents for Summit has no endorsement from the signers for anything beyond the scope of the original communication and the online petition. When they ask that the redevelopment project be scrapped, that the land be turned into a park, that the contractor be fired, that multiple contractors be engaged, that the city sell the land to a private developer, and other schemes to stop the project, they can only speak for themselves. Those requests are not endorsed by the people who signed the original communication or the online petition. Residents for Summit describes itself as a, quote, "grassroots community group," unquote. That is, quote, "asking for development that fits the size, scope, and scale of Summit's unique and highly desirable character," unquote. Yet the group has become a politically oriented advocacy group. Their Facebook page is a billboard for Delia Havill's campaign and member comments are definitely politically partisan. Now, I'm not attacking Delia. I want to make that clear. I presume she had nothing to do with the Facebook posting, but the group should declare whether they have a political agenda or not, if they are to be fully transparent. Finally, Residents for Summit representatives often claim it is not an organized group. I have come to learn that they are well organized.
Excuse me?
I had a conversation about two weeks ago with a person who said he is a member of the Residents for Summit Steering Committee. That was the first I learned of a steering committee. So I asked another frequent critic of redevelopment if there is a steering committee. He said, "There is no steering committee, but there is a group of people who meet every few weeks or monthly to guide the larger group." What I learned from these two encomers is that there is an organized shadow group, eating, planning, formulating positions and tactics, and disseminating them to others. Who are these people? What's their common interest? What do they stand for? Why haven't they identified themselves? Why haven't they shared their deliberations with the people they claim to represent or the people who live in Summit? Withholding information about the group's existence and membership is not being fully transparent. The lack of transparency and less than truthfulness I have described explain why common council should require members of the advisory committee to agree to binding and legally enforceable confidentiality. Without assurances that confidentiality will be scrupulously maintained, Summit could end up with a committee that is less interested in objectively analyzing the finances of a project than in representing a small incognito group of people who are interested in achieving, who are not interested in achieving a good end for the Broad Street West project, or more interested in using objections to Broad Street West as an issue in a political campaign. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Vassman, can you share the?
I will send it. I made some pictures.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your concerns and comments. So every volunteer who is appointed to a board or commission signs an oath of office, which is the same one we sign. So I think members of council join you in being concerned about the idea that this, this group that will have access to confidential and proprietary information, that that would be concerning. You know, to me, and I think to most members of this council, we are hopeful and I think pretty confident that the professionals that we are appointing understand the responsibility of the information that they're going to be receiving and we're going to be working with our counsel, our legal counsel, to determine whether there's an additional non-disclosure agreement and confidentiality agreement that will need to be signed in addition to the oath that's already going to be signed. So that, I think, is all I'll say about that for now. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Councilmember Allen, please.
Thank you, Council President Protem. I just want to say that I agree that they should be taking an oath and I would say that the conversation that we just had was a demonstration that this is not a political, you know, gamesmanship on this advisory committee. I had to make some concessions on who I voted yes for. I think the people were very well chosen and they were well qualified and I think in 10 minutes ago, I had to, I felt as though it was. in 10 minutes ago, I had to, I felt as though it was important for me to share why I chose someone. And so I think there was very careful consideration on this committee. I think everyone has, especially myself, has to give a little bit, give a little bit, because you get nowhere without any type of compromise. And I just, I do want to say, without going political, but the Residents for Summit, whoever they are, which I feel there's been a rally, we know that there are people sitting in the, in the, in the council chamber, but I will say this, there is a counter belief that redevelopment should happen in this town. I am one of them, and I have strongly stated from the very get-go that I personally think we are overdeveloping this state. It has taken me a lot of time to get here, a lot of research, and a lot of listening, and I realize that I'm going to have to make decisions that are very difficult philosophically for me to make. And I just want to say that I think that coming here to say that people are just trying to stir up trouble, I think acknowledging that people are struggling, because I'm struggling. And I don't want to dig in, which, you know, I could, but I don't want to dig in. I'm trying to needle, you know, thread the needle with my colleagues and this community and do what's right. And so I believe in the Residents for Summit mission, because they speak for me. And, and I, not politically, but they speak for my concerns. So I do, I just need to say that, and it's not from a political standpoint, I'm going to ignore what you said about Facebook, I don't read it, but I want this community to know, I'm here in good faith, I'm going to do what I can do to make the right decisions. And when, when it says the scope, this, you know, development, and I've said this with you, you and I have had hours of conversations, I want it to fit the size, scope, and character of Summit. That is not three bad words. These are words that mean something to people, and it should look right. It should fit our town, and it should be a representation of every single person that lives in this town, because it should be good enough for everybody. So I just wanted to say that. I appreciate your opinion, but I will say that they speak for me, and I'm here to try and do the work of, of the people in our community to make sure they get the right development. Thank you, Council President Pro Temp.
Thank you. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Eric Kraslaski. Good, thank you. Eric Kraslaski, 169 Broad Street. I, I will say, a year ago, or even six months ago, I would not have imagined myself up here. To be honest, I don't enjoy politics, and the last thing I want to be doing on a Thursday night is sitting at a meeting when I have two daughters at home. I have a daughter who just turned five. She started at Jefferson earlier this month. I have a almost two-year-old. I'm originally from Pittsburgh. I've lived in Summit now for five years, and I'm a registered Democrat. I'm a huge Pittsburgh Steelers fan. I love mint chocolate chip ice cream, and I'm a vegetarian. Why do I tell you this? Because nobody up here I've had the opportunity to interact with on a personal level. And I will say, I think one of the immense benefits of all the discussions around Residents for Summit and Broad Street West is community engagement. I myself am a member of Residents for Summit. Why? Because I care about the next 30 years as a resident in this town and raising a family. And I think that's incredibly, incredibly important. I think the, if I think to the last meeting that I was at, there was an individual, Mr. Chi, who I had not known before. Again, I raise my hand, I'm a vegetarian, so I did not know he operated a hot dog stand. Within 18 hours after that gentleman stood up here, $2,000 had been raised on his behalf because of members of Residents for Summit. It was posted in Residents for Summit, it was posted at Summit New Jersey's Happenings as part of a GoFundMe campaign, and I think ultimately, I cannot stress enough, we have people engaged. I think this interaction right here, this is incredibly uncomfortable for me, we should be doing this around, I saw, and I think she's still back there, I'm going to add to the peas of whether it's a pizza, whether it's a pint, we can do pancakes in the park. So I think there are some peas to add on to the pursue and pursuits, we'll work on that for Millie Cooper. But, but I know a lot of the names of the residents standing behind me that I never would have known six months ago. So I think kudos to the mayor in terms of some of the commentary. I think there has to be a level of integrity, respect, in terms of the members that were appointed to this finance committee. I am also an advocate for something that extends well beyond the finance committee, but I think this is a right first step. And I really, again, encourage this active dialogue between both the council and residents. So felt very, very compelled to say that. I do have some additional questions as well, but would ask that all of the residents, I think we've gotten to the point, or away from the point, of it's a you versus us, we're Summit residents in its entirety, so we should keep a lot of the inflammatory remarks out of this discussion. Okay? So just a couple of questions, just so I understand in greater detail, and I was listening from home to start off this evening, and I had a two-year-old who was upstairs taking a bath, so I didn't hear everything, but I just want to understand, in terms of the finance committee and their role, and you'd spoken to in terms of making financial sense, could you talk a little bit more about what they will be looking at? Are they looking at value and valuation? Are they looking at utility? Are they looking at potential building schematics? And then in what way will that make its way back to the public?
Sure. Well, thank you. So you've got two Jefferson alum up here, that's me and the councilmember Hairston.
University of Pittsburgh.
Oh, oh my gosh. Got three Jefferson Elementary School alum, alumni up here, our clerk as well. And I hate mint chocolate ice cream.
I like, he was just saying.
We were just talking about York candy, and I cannot, I just don't think mint and chocolate belong together, but that's fine. I'm a New York Giants fan, so sorry about that. And I, and I do eat meat. So I, I think we'll start with what we agree with, right? Which is, which is that the master plan is incredibly important. The redevelopment plan is important. Our city finances are important. Our affordable housing obligation is important, and making sure that we do this in a way that involves the community is important. We agree, I think, on all that stuff. The committee's role is essentially to look at all of the details, all the financial details. So assumptions forming the basis of a proposed purchase price, including the estimated revenue anticipated from the project. Report on any financial information pertaining to the project that may be submitted to them. So if there's pro formas and things that we can get from the developer, that's going to be part of it. To consider the potential for a payment in lieu of taxes, if that's a good option for us. To generally identify questions and concerns regarding the financial impact, so that would be, you know, an impact study. To bring attention to council of anything else that they think that we're missing. So to, to me, the, where we are here, and I think the councilmembers largely agree, is we've directed the developer to come back with us, to us, with a proposal that is compliant with the redevelopment plan, that emphasizes affordable housing and parking, and that also has clear and transparent financials. So if the redeveloper is not able to come back with something that's viable for them to build, or something that's not viable for the city, we, we will not have a deal. And so that's the first thing. Once we get to the idea of there is or is not a deal that is within the framework that we've just outlined, then we can go ahead and, and design a building, right? It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily make sense now to say, we're going to design a building if you don't know, or two buildings, or three, if you don't know how big it is, or how many apartment units you're going to put in, or how many parking spots you need, right? Like, we need the program first, and then we need to know that that's financially viable, and then we can go design. And that's where we get everybody involved. We get the community at large, we get our boards and commissions, and we do, you know, we move forward with something that, you know, nobody's going to be completely happy with, but hopefully lots of people are very happy with. And I think that, I'm hopeful that we can do that. So that's, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel, Council President, I just can't let a Pittsburgh resident walk away without shouting you out, and about what you said about community engagement is one of the things that I ran on, how important it is to have community members involved. And so I applaud your taking the time out, because usually people with five-year-olds and two-year-olds don't have that opportunity to do that. And so I want to applaud you for that. And the, I really, I just feel like I can't get away with saying we cannot do it on Facebook. And I appreciate Councilwoman Allen for saying, it just doesn't happen on Facebook. That is not the kind of community engagement that brings the city together in a way to move something so important. The debate on Facebook is not the way for the community engagement to happen. So I appreciate your showing up and coming out here. I just think it's, needs to be said. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Welcome to our first appointee to the committee.
Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron Avenue. I am a member of Residents for Summit, and I'm not in any way against affordable housing. And I look forward to doing this work. I, I would ask that we work very hard on defining what our scope of work will be. When you use a word like "report," we need to know what that is. What sort of a report are we giving and to whom? I understand we won't have any decision-making authority, and that's fine, but I'd like a little more information about the reporting method. And then also, just, I know Greg and I had spoken about this, I want to know what the scope of work for Acacia is, because that will very much define our scope of work, because what you've described in, in words is an awful lot of work, which is fine. But we really need to have it defined. For example, when we get the pro formas from the developers, in what form will that be? And how will that get to us? Those are important things, and it's just important things as far as completing the work. I'm glad to do it. Oh, I totally forgot. Mint chip, Lincoln School, and I provided two Lincoln School graduates as well, so I'm up to three on that score. And I noticed this four-to-one ratio, not perfect, because I'm also a product of a women's college, I went to Wellesley. So, did you go to a women's college?
I went to Wellesley, but actually I transferred, because it wasn't for me, but I spent two years there, though.
Happy to do it, and I do all my work every day. I work as an independent fiduciary, which means that I make decisions where there's a conflict of interest. So I do this all the time. So in answer to our previous questioner, and probably for, I would assume for the other committee members, this is what we do all the time. We walk into the snake pit all the time. And we walk in with very strong opinions all the time. So there should be some comfort from, I hope, from people on both sides, and I, and I see just from the names, I'm assuming there's going to be people sort of on both sides of this, and I welcome that. I think it's good. That's how you get good answers for things. But for me, the, the most important way you get good answers for things is laying out the scope of work at the beginning. Because we don't want to, we're not going to be asked to do more than that scope of work, but we really need to understand how that's going to be done. And when you're doing these scopes of work, I find, you really have to think, is that something we can do with the information we're going to have in the time we have to do it? And so that's why I say we need to be really, really clear about what we're going to do, what the reporting requirements are, and how the sausage is going to be made. So that's all I have to say. So, yes, I am a member of Residents for Summit. I did have a bad reaction to that very large building, because I thought it, it didn't look like the summit I grew up in. It doesn't look like the summit I grew up in now. But that doesn't mean that I'm not going to look at all the information that was given to me and try to get the best answer I can, and ask the best questions, because that's how you get the good answers, is to ask the hard questions. That's what Lincoln taught me, that's what Wellesley taught me. So that's why I'm here, and that's why I did it, so.
Thank you very much.
That's why you're on the committee, Susan.
Good.
Thank you very much. You know, I think we're, we're very much on the same page. We are not considering the, the big building anymore. And I think we are, we, while we're appointing members to the committee now, I think, we're not at a, at a point yet where we're going to, where we're ready to start the work. And we agree that we need to clearly define what the scope will be and what the output will be. And we're, we're in agreement on that. So, thank you. Other comments from members of the public about this resolution? 9909.
I just have to talk. Susan, thank you, because you read my mind, too. This is what, I stood up last February, cold night, there were no Residents for Summit, nothing like that. And I stood up and I said, Summit is a long-looker, but look what you're looking at. I mean, look at what you heard here. All different people studying themselves and philosophically in one thing and another. This is nothing but good. It is nothing but good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am a member of the Residents of Summit, yes. I was all by myself in February, and then other people gathered around, and I wasn't interested in, in politics at that point in my life or anything. I was just interested in this. And that's basically what we're doing. Everyone is a resident of Summit. I mean, that's really the answer, and that's what I hear tonight. So I just had to tell you, I have no more peas left, except I do like mint. If I could put a pea with it, I would.
That's just something we're not going to agree on.
Well, you don't.
Thank you.
That doesn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one more thing. Do you have a joint?
Thank you. Thank you. There we go. There we go.
Thank you, Millie.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And for the people watching at home, that was former Councilwoman Millie Cooper. Okay, other comments on this resolution? 9909. Okay. I think that's it. Do we, should we take a vote? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We are at Finance Resolution Number Two, and this is me also. So, this resolution authorizes the purchase of audiovisual equipment for the council chamber and Whitman Room. This purchase will be made through a national cooperative, the Interlocal Purchasing System, in the amount of $60,894.17. As has been discussed in several council meetings, the AV system in this room is about 15 years old. It's essentially being held together with duct tape and chewing gum. This much-needed upgrade was included in the 2021 capital budget, and the work will be completed over approximately three weeks at the end of this year. There may be a need to reschedule some meetings, including planning, zoning, and council, depending upon when the work takes, takes place. Not reschedule, I'm sorry, that's the wrong word. Relocate meetings. I'm sorry, I apologize, I read the wrong word. Our goal is to minimize the disruption to meeting schedules, as having meetings elsewhere is outside of the norm and actually very expensive. But we want to make sure we give adequate warning that meeting relocation is a possibility. It's also a step in the direction toward being able to host hybrid meetings. However, our legal counsel still advises that the appropriate protections for the city are not yet in place from the state legislature. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay. Comments from members of council?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President Pro Temp. I was just going to say, I'm happy about this investment in the equipment. I do believe, and I know we're getting legal advice against hybrid, and I think that needs to be cleared up, but I do believe hybrid meetings are inevitable at some point. I don't know when that's going to happen, but we see how efficient they are in our committee meetings. The problem is... The problem is, you know, I was kicked off of a committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, like three times within the hour. So it happens, and I'm paying for the best internet service that money can buy in my house. So it, some days, it's just fickle. It just doesn't work the way you want it to. But eventually, I think we're going to get there. I don't know when it's going to be, but I think it'll be good for the public to have more input and more involvement. So I'm glad we're making this investment.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President Protam. I just wanted to say thank you, Rosie. I know that you, clerk, sorry, that you've worked hard to find the right supplier for this, and I think this is definitely headed in the right direction. So thank you for working on it. I look forward to it being implemented.
President Protam.
Of course.
I would be remiss if I did mention how much A.J. Rangou has been involved. He's our technology manager, and he's given great advice and guidance on this, so I couldn't do without him.
All right. Any other members, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Okay, the motion passes. Community Programs and Parking Services Resolution. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This is number 9916, and this resolution authorizes the appointment of the new Chair of Silver Summit Senior Citizens Community Advisory Committee. Per earlier closed-session discussion, we are pleased to nominate Katie Kovar. Katie is here tonight. Thanks for being here. And Katie's a graduate of Summit High School. She's a social work professional and is a manager, is the manager of social work and community outreach at Sage, right here in Summit. In her professional work, she serves senior members of this community already to some extent. Katie will bring energy and very relevant experience to Silver Summit, making her an ideal candidate to fill this important volunteer role. Thank you to Katie for stepping up to volunteer in this capacity, and I move that we adopt this resolution.
I second that. Comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston?
I just really want to thank Katie for stepping up. I'm so excited about the committee getting activated again. I have some wonderful senior friends in the Senior Citizen Building who are excited about getting started and having things focused on their participation in town again. And so I just want to thank you for stepping up, and I look forward to seeing what's happening with that committee.
I just want to share that I've had a couple of conversations with Katie, and been in my office and over at Sage, and so I've been very impressed. I think you're going to do a great job. But more importantly, I've heard from various and sundry members of the community who have interacted with you and are thrilled with the good, strong work you're doing. So thank you for being willing to serve. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will just add, you know, how about Summit Public Schools, huh? With all these graduates giving back? Thank you, Katie. We, I was just in contact with one of our detectives who is, who was having basically an issue with getting services to a senior couple in Summit. And Katie was just incredibly helpful in connecting the dots right away, and this is just, it was just an example of many of the kind of thing that she's been doing in the community, and she's going to be great in this role. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry it was such a long time to you.
Yeah. Okay. Comments from members of the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion passes as well. Congratulations, Katie. Thank you. And now we're moving on to Safety and Health. Councilmember Allen.
Okay. Thank you, Council President Protam. At our July 26, 2022 council meeting, we adopted a resolution declaring a vacancy within the police department for the position of police officer. Tonight, I am introducing Resolution Number 9896 that authorizes the hiring and appointment of Jonathan Ramos to that position, pending final completion of his background check. His appointment will take effect on Tuesday, October 11, 2022. And with him, Jonathan brings three years of police experience from the Irvington Police Department, and we'd like to extend a warm welcome to him. I ask to approve this resolution.
I will second that. Any comments from members of council? I'll just say, welcome Officer Ramos. Any comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes as well. Okay. Safety and Health, Number Two. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Resolution Number 9908 that authorizes the grant application submission to the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety for the purchase of automated license plate reader, which is ALPR technology. If awarded, this grant would offset costs to upgrade and expand the city's existing ALPR system. This critical technology supports law enforcement by monitoring the movement of stolen vehicles in and out of Summit, as well as responding quickly to amber and silver alerts. Eligible expenses would include costs to acquire, implement, expand, or upgrade ALPR technology in local law enforcement jurisdictions, and the grant application deadline is October 15, and awards will be announced by November 30. The grant program has a 24-month project period that would begin on December 1, and no matches required. I ask to approve this resolution.
I will second that and open up to comments from members of council.
I'll say something.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you. I would just say that I'm hoping that this grant goes through, because I think it would be, as Mr. Clemens had spoken tonight, I just think it's an addition, a nice addition to our town, and figuring out, keeping us safe. Sorry.
It's really cool. It's really cool technology, and it'll help, you know, it'll help in the fight against auto thefts and in silver and amber alerts as well. It's just, it's a cool, it's a cool technology, and hopefully our grant will be, will win the grant. Okay. Comments from members of the public on this? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes. So we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Would you start us off? Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This is ID Number 9684. To reject the bids and authorize a new bid advertisement for the Michigan Avenue Improvement Project. The city recently received eight bids for the Michigan Avenue Improvement Project. The low bidder was crossroads paving in the amount of $340,838. Because the lowest bid exceeds the dollar value in the capital budget for this project, the bids need to be rejected in accordance with New Jersey law. The project specifications and construction plans need to be revised to match the funding currently allocated. This resolution will reject the bids received and authorize a new bid advertisement for the project. Completion of the project is now estimated to be late spring of 2023, and I move this resolution.
I will second that one, yep. That was the one I had. Okay. Comments from members of council about this? I'll just say I think this is the right way to do it. Instead of increasing the money in the capital fund for this, we're going back for sharpen the pencils, right? That's, that's good. Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes. And second, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This is ID Number 9811. To authorize a request to County of Union Traffic Signal Replacement at Ashwood Avenue and Broad Street. The signal at the intersection of Ashwood Avenue and Broad Street is 26 years old and the second oldest in the city's inventory. It has been knocked down five times in the last 10 years due to its location on a corner with a small radius. I also want to add that its old design is not practical for current conditions. Though it is still fully operational, it is due for numerous upgrades, including the signal control box and the installation of a camera detection system. It also should be connected to communicate with the adjacent signal at Morris Avenue and Ashwood Avenue. As with all signals on county roads, the county will fund the cost to replace or install signals, but it is the city's responsibility to maintain them. This resolution is a request to Union County to consider the replacement and upgrade of the existing signal at Ashwood Avenue and Broad Street, and I move this resolution.
I will second that and open up to comments from members of council. This is very much my neighborhood, and I think this is great. Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And this motion passes. Continue, please, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This is ID Number 9911. To appoint Recycling Advisory Committee members. As we discussed in the closed session, we are appointing two student representatives to the Recycling Advisory Committee to replace Gillian Hempel and Anna Stupinen. We are welcoming Anaya Dubey and Sophia Mendenhall. Their terms will expire at the end of this year, and we're hopeful they'll be committed for next year, and we're looking forward to their contributions. And I ask that we move this resolution.
I will second that. Any comments from members of council? I think it's excellent that we have students who are willing to volunteer. Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes. And last one, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President Protam. This is ID Number 9917. Summit Free Market Steering Committee amend the membership structure and appoint members. So as we discussed in the closed session, the Summit Free Market appointments, and we're making new appointments and amending the structure to add two Summit High School student body representatives instead of one. Both terms will expire at the end of this year. So Kaya Jane and Kate Witcher will be joining us, and we look forward to their contributions to this amazing committee. And I ask that we move this resolution.
I will second that. And comments from members of council? Okay. Comments from members of the public? All right. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion passes as well. So we're at the point where we are at the consent agenda. Usually, we take these as a package. Anything anybody wants to pull out of these? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes. We're at council members' comments and new business. Any council members with comments or new business?
I just want to remind everybody that Free Market is just coming Saturday. Saturday morning starts at 8 to 1? I'm not sure. But Saturday morning, Free Market.
Okay.
And Council President Protam.
Yes.
So you can drop off food at the Elks Club for Sage, their Meals on Wheels program. You know, I think if you drop off $25 worth of food, you get a free drink. So there's your motivation.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
And the date on that is, the date is October 8 is the last day.
Thank you.
So Friday.
So Friday.
No, Saturday.
Saturday.
Any other council member comments or new business?
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President Protam. And I'm like, not sure of the time and when this happened, but I know we did the groundbreaking for the affordable housing units and how the rain just came in and it was just a mess. And they showed up, I think it was yesterday, in all of that pouring rain and all of the traffic and craziness that was going on. And I'm sad we couldn't celebrate their arrival and the traffic nightmare that happened, but I did want to just recognize it has begun.
Yes.
And this is a really good time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. This is Morris Habitat for Humanities.
Morris Habitat.
Second project in Summit and their first modular construction in Summit. So time from construction to when families will move in there is much, much shorter. So I was thrilled to be there with you, have the ground softened up a little bit by the rain. All right. Other council member comments? New business? All right. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right.